It was a pleasure and always great to see the citizens of Dillon County attend these county council meetings. Again, we welcome you. We understand that each and every one of you come from various districts. And each and every one of you have representatives up here from those districts. And there will be issues that will be discussed. And just want to let you know that your representative from your district has the same right as anyone else to comment on whatever issues is on the floor. Again, I welcome you. This time we ask our Administrator, Mr. Ryan Berry, if he'll lead us into the panel discussion. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the liberal public, to which we stand, in one nation, under God, in the mission for liberty and justice for all. This time I'll ask you to join me in the invitation. Father, we thank you today. We bless you again for life, health, and strength. We thank you for another opportunity to come before a people, oh God, that you have given us to serve. We want to say thank you. Thank you, and we thank the people for an opportunity to serve them. Father, we pray your blessings upon this county council meeting. You said if we acknowledge you in all of your ways, that you would direct our path. We pray for the direction for this meeting. We remember our nation, remember our President of the United States, remember his cabinet lord, and all those that serve in public office. We call upon you for your guidance and your help. In Jesus' name, amen. Moving right along, this time I ask for a motion. If everyone has an opportunity to view the agenda, and if the agenda is staying correct, we need a motion to approve the agenda this time.
Just to run out amend the agenda to page out of H and out of I, or we don't have a full count from here? I want everybody to have a useful understanding.
Okay. Got a motion to amend the agenda out of H on the new business and out of I on the new business? Need a second for that motion.
Okay.
Okay, you got a second and any further discussion? No discussion? All in favor of the amendments? Alright, this time we will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'm making that motion.
Okay. Need a second?
Okay.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, no discussion? All in favor of approving amendment to the agenda? Moving right along, asking for approval of amendments. Oh one twenty-five seventeen, oh two oh eight seventeen with a call meeting. I need a motion to approve amendments.
Make that motion.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Any discussion with approval of amendments? No discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I want to oppose. Moving right along, the agenda number five, public hearing. Can anyone, Madam Clerk, get signed up for a public hearing? Who wants to sign up? Mr. um, Mr. Berry, would you elaborate just a little bit on public hearing and its authorizing?
Yes, sir. A is in regards to the purchase of the Ellinport land. Our obligation is one hundred and fifty-eight acres. At that time, we would convey to the Ellinport. And B is to amend the budget to make appropriations to by the Ellinport and other county expenses.
I appreciate it. Just want to give the ordinance some clarity as to anything that you feel agenda, such as public hearing A and B that would directly affect the general public. We have to have a public hearing, so that's why it's on there. This would affect the general public. So there's no one that showed up to speak concerning that. But I wanted to make sure that you had some clarity on that. Alright? Moving right along, number six, new business. A, Kenny Smith, Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, County Counselor. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you and the citizen of Dillon County. I'm Kenny Smith, the President of the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center in Dillon. I'm here today to see if there was somewhat of an oversight on a part of the council or oversight on the part of the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center. Opposed funding dated one February two thousand sixteen. It was the council replied back in April two thousand sixteen and noted that there was in a receipt of the request that the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center had presented. In our initial proposed request, we, the youth center, requested a five-year, twenty-five-thousand-dollar investment pledge. Whereas it would be five thousand dollars per year for a total of five years. Adding up to twenty-five thousand dollars for that five-year period. That five-year, that five thousand dollars per year investment would assist the youth center in meeting our goals for the amount of program dedicated to the youth in Dillon on a yearly basis. As you may know, the Dillon County Youth Center conducts the Ruby and Rose Book and Law Literacy Program on an annual basis where we provide books to the 4K Elementary School here in District Four, Stewart Heights, and South Elementary, and East Elementary. Whereas we read to the students on a monthly basis, the 4K. And after reading to them, we will discuss the book in which we just read. And we will give the books to them to take home to they, for they can read to their parents or have their parents read to them and their other siblings. We would like to expand to include later in ladder. However, at the moment, the budgetary restraints will not allow us to explore that option at this time. The youth center also conducts an annual Young Women's Empowerment Summit for females, youth in Dillon County and surrounding areas with the presenters and motivators, speakers coming from Dillon and surrounding areas to include Georgia and North Carolina. This yearly event hosts fifty to seventy-five young women from all walks of life, exposing them to the things young females should be talking about to male adult individuals. The youth center also conducts an annual empowerment for the young men in Dillon County and surrounding areas. This summit is open to all young men from the ages of twelve to twenty-five, exposing them to an array of topics in which young men need to be talking about amongst themselves and amongst father figures. The youth center also conducts a Let's Talk platform whereas the young men and young women have opportunity to talk with their parents on a public forum, talking about love, sex, relationship, and putting pregnancy on par, just to name a few of the things that the youth center is doing on an annual basis. Get it back to the reason I mentioned. Since our original letter in February and your numerous budget meeting workshop, we have witnessed several motions as seconds by different county council members on an array of issues, from thousands of dollars for softball league, and there's nothing wrong with that, to thousands of dollars for local clubs and, which again, there's nothing wrong with that either. And we also have witnessed, or it appears, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but it appears that only, that after only a few minutes of addressing council, there was motion, second, and approved to provide over sixteen thousand dollars to enlarge a housing area for cats and dogs. I know that there are a lot of animal lovers here in Dillon County, and again, there's nothing wrong with that. And also, the council did provide funds for the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center when we requested it. Have over sixteen thousand dollars to make cats and dogs comfortable versus a few thousand dollars for our children? I don't know about you, but there's nothing on God's green earth that is more important, that is more precious than our beautiful children. Regardless of whether they look like you or not, regardless of whether they play sports or not. If I was an only outside looking in, I would guess that we, the citizens of Dillon County, care more about dogs and cats than we care about some of our youth in Dillon County. It has been over years since we requested representation within the county council budget. And as of yet, we still haven't had the opportunity to sit down and determine what the council can or cannot do, or what the council will or will not do for the children of Dillon and the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center. We are only asking for fair representation within the budget of the Dillon County just as representation is given to other entities within the boundaries of the county council budget. The elected and appointed officials alike in Dillon County area uses the phrase "putting children first" in Dillon County. When it's time for us to put our money where our mouth is. The time has passed for telling, for talking loud and saying not to for our youth in Dillon County and surrounding areas. The one question that I would leave with the council is, have we really done all that we can do on a long-term basis for the youth in Dillon County? We are not looking for handouts, but we are looking for long-term investment for our children in Dillon County. And I would guarantee you that that investment that you provide will reap benefits for our youth and residents of Dillon County that will last for a lifetime. If we say that we are on the same team, at least remember the playing field. When one entity of Dillon County win, all of Dillon County win. Let's not be like the priest and the Levi in the parable of the good Samaritan. Whereas the priest and Levi only worried about what would happen to them if they would stop and help someone. But let us be like the good Samaritan, not worried about what would happen to him if we would stop, but what would happen to them if we don't stop and help them, our youth in Dillon County. Mr. Chairman, we thank you for your time and consideration of giving us a moment to speak to the council. We will look forward in working with you and talking to you in the previous months to come, or in the months to come, or the weeks to come in reference to the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center. I will ask to entertain any questions that the council have at this time.
Mr. Kenny, Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for coming. And certainly, we want you to know that we're not going to cross over on the other side. I think there may be a little misunderstanding. There are certain services that we, as a government body of this county, have to provide, such as animal shelters and things of that sort. And we get your point. You have been coming for some time, and you've been wanting to help, and we do understand that. And I want to thank you and let you know that we appreciate your passion for the young people. But we don't want to be misleading at all. It is not the intention of this council to look over anyone. Certainly, you said, you know, from your own statement, that there were budgetary problems that you had. Dillon County faces a hard budgetary problem as well. You know, we have a hard time. We have a lot, we have big shoes to fill. And you said, again, in your statement, that you saw people put in here, everybody request things. And that's what we got. We got something that everybody wants something, and sometimes it's hard to help everybody. But we want to do what we can. I understand what you're asking. Five thousand dollars for the next five years. I don't think that we can do this. However, I believe that we can help you somewhat. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to help Mr. Smith.
Chairman Scott, I listen to Mr. Smith, you know, contacting and observing him down through the years. And Mr. Smith has been an asset to the youth of Dillon County. And me and him had some discussion about this. And I'm in agreeance with you. I don't think that we can solemnly say we can give you five thousand dollars for five years. But it might be my recommendation, if we would give you five thousand dollars for the first year and look at, look at it from that point on. That would be my recommendation for the council.
We're making that in the form of a motion on Councilman Campbell.
That I do.
Okay, do we get a second?
I say.
Okay, you got a second and any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Moving right along with the agenda, number six, new business. John Smith, Department of Public, Dillon Presentation.
Mr. Chairman, to preface this presentation, we've been looking at ways to save some money in our fire service need and create some revenue that I've tasked Mr. Smith here to look into, some billing that wouldn't put an extra burden on our citizens. And you'll see, I think, that he's done his homework. So John's going to make his presentation, just for information at this point.
I just give Mr. Kenny mine and let him go with it. That was pretty, that was pretty good. Mr. Chairman, members of council, in past history, the fire departments in the county individually by their own choice have billed insurance companies previously for responses to structural fires, car wrecks, car fires. At some point, they all stopped completely. And the discussion was brought up in a chief's meeting previously. Could we explore the possibility of doing this? Like Administrator Berry said, he asked me to take a look into it. I contacted some local departments. I did some research nationwide. Currently, there are only ten states in the United States that don't allow fire departments to bill. South Carolina is not one of those states. They do allow it. I talked to one neighboring department who is in, much like we are, they charge a basic fire fee of thirty-five dollars in the county area, seventy-five dollars in the, within the city for their fire service, but it's a city-based fire service. So the county bases the thirty-five, and the city bases the seventy-five. They have budget constraints. They do bill for MVA responses. They do not bill for structural fire responses. They are currently looking at renegotiating with the county that they serve because that city serves the county in some aspects of fire and rescue, not medical transportation, but rescue. Currently, with the fee that they're charging, they're coming up short on their budget. And I'm sure each one of you has looked at it. The fire service in the county last year costed one point two million dollars. The thirty-five-dollar fire fee brings in three hundred thousand dollars. And it has consistently brought in three hundred thousand dollars per year, almost every year, the last five that I looked at. So it's not going up, and I don't think we're going to bill ten thousand structures in the county to make up another three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred fifty thousand, which would still put us short of what we're spending in the county. Department Two that I talked to is also in a neighboring county. Their fire department is funded through a Miller's based system, but they also bill insurance companies. They bill homeowners insurance a flat fee of five hundred dollars. So first question I asked was, what do you do for a homeowner that doesn't have insurance? There is no bill. I said, what do you do if an insurance company says, "We refuse to pay"? He said, "We will resubmit a bill again." He said, "But after a second time of them telling us, 'We refuse to pay the fee,'" he said, "We just drop it." All they do is bill insurance companies, and if the insurance company pays, they pay. If they don't, they don't. If the property owner does not have insurance, they do not bill him a five hundred dollar fee for responding. Most homeowners insurance policies have a five hundred dollar structural fire response fee built into them. Will the homeowners insurance premium go up if we charge it? The answer is no. It's not based on that. Would the insurance company drop him for a fire department charging him that? The answer to that question is also no. Because it's part of their policy, it's just not publicized or advertised that fire services can bill for. Department Two has quite a bit of large structures in their territory, in their district. A lot of large homes. Those folks pay Miller's basic coverages, but they charge the five hundred fee, like I said. The response I got from the chief there is, there are possibly three homeowners insurance companies that do not pay. They refuse to pay. So if the property owner has that insurance company, they don't charge it. They already know which insurance companies do and don't pay. They use a billing service to do their billing. The fire department purchased in the iPad. When the engineer that's responsible for the truck goes out, he takes a picture of the insurance card for an automobile or gets the insurance policy information for a homeowner's policy. Takes a picture of the homeowner or vehicle owner's ID. And it's all done in the iPad, and when he gets back to the station and it connects to the wifi, it's automatically submitted, and the billing company does it. In the handout that you have, the fire engine you'll see on the front is from Georgetown, Texas. Georgetown, Texas adopted a policy of billing for homeowners insurance and billing auto owners insurance. They also adopt a policy of billing for false alarms, for any pulled alarms, such as in a commercial structure. Someone pulled an alarm and was arrested, that person can be fined. The full data on how much that's brought in to them as far as income is not available yet. They just passed this last year. But they have put protections in place to allow them to bill where it is necessary and where it is possible. The front page of that engine, that would be what would be considered a rural pumper from Pierce Manufacturing. The pumper itself is four hundred and three thousand dollars in brand new. The hose for supply line and crossways is going to cost you about four thousand dollars. A booster reel, two thousand. The tools to connect the hydrants, connect the pump, connect the other trucks, you're looking at about thirteen thousand dollars. Rescue tools, which are extrication tools, tools used to cut on cars, are twenty thousand dollars. Fire tools, which would be your hand tools, pipe coals, axes, shovels, that nature, about four hundred and fifty dollars. And then powered fire tools, which would be your power saws, chainsaw for cutting, roof saw, vent saw. You're looking at about fifty-nine hundred dollars. All total, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't buy a new fire engine. I think you, since I've been here for four years, we bought one. The county. And it was a demo truck that had some stuff on it, so it was a smart purchase. But in the situation we're in now, we spent one point two million, but we lack some things that we do need. And we understand that some of those expenditures probably can be fixed or need, some funds need to be redirected and spent on other things than what they're being spent on. I can speak only for my department. I speak to you on billing insurance on behalf of all the county chiefs by their choice, with the exception of one that I couldn't contact. As far as Station Three and Lakeview is concerned, the expenditures that we've spent in the past three years that I've been chief have been used for two purposes: to provide my firefighters with adequate training, equipment, and tools. The other side of that is provide the taxpayers in Station Three's district with the lowest ISO rating possible. The last time we were rated was in two thousand and eleven. We received a six-nine. A six-nine means anybody within a thousand feet behind it pays a six fee, which is low. One is the best you can get, the absolute best. In South Carolina, it's about half a dozen ones right now, maybe less. Ten means you don't have a fire department. So folks were paying a six-nine based on two thousand and eleven rating. ISO visited our department in January. We're going to what's called a hall ward, which means it won't matter where you live in regards to a hydrant. And we're looking at either a six across the board for everybody within five thousand or five miles of our station, regardless of a thousand feet from the hydrant, possibly a five. What this means is eighty-five percent of our population, which lives over a thousand feet from a hydrant, will save between twenty-five and thirty percent on homeowners. The funding we're looking at would be used for those purposes. Provide firefighters adequate training, adequate equipment, adequate tools, and provide our taxpayers, our customers if you will, with a return on their investment because they're paying for it. You can't, you can't clearance the fire service, so to speak, when you go shopping. But we have to shop smart. We have to spend smart. Administrator Berry is working with us, talking with us about making some changes to the way we spend, to spend smarter, do things better. But we want to look at other avenues of generating revenue to help make up the difference. Right now, you guys are funding it through the general fund at about nine hundred thousand dollars a year. So what we would like to do is put it at your, at your hands to make a decision on whether you'd like to explore billing. We're not looking for approval to bill. We're looking to take the next step, see if it's possible for us to bill. Would it be feasible? Do some research and find out if it would be worth us going through the effort and expense that it might cost us to put that together and to get a billing company. And if not, we've lost another. If so, we've gained somewhat of the loss that the county has taken through making up the difference between the fire fee and what the fire service is spending.
Mr. Smith, if you're talking to anyone about this, has already had this in place, what kind of fee can you give for billing?
A neighboring county that does the billing, he said that he brings in about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. But they respond to motor vehicle accidents and do extrication. Right now, the only department that does that is Station Nine in Oak Grove. The rescue squads in the other areas handle the responding to MBAs and extrication. We only respond if it's a fire. Now, we do respond if needed to set up a landing zone, which can be billed through auto insurance in an MVA. Most of the money that's made on an MVA is made through cutting on the car itself to get the victim out and landing a helicopter for a flight. One department, he said that he charged fifteen hundred dollars for landing a helicopter. The other department charges twenty-four. Why, why the difference? That's the decision they made, the price that they set. Now, the company that does the billing for both of them gives, gives the input on what you can charge, what's the going rate, what you're looking at neighborhood-wise on prices.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your presentation. Moving right along, number six, new business. Letter C, Advanced Rating System Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, if you look at the attachment that came along with the package, this is, you'll see some itemized equipment that we need to do some work that's already been requested. Other than the work is just forecasting what we, what we need to be done. I think we can make such an order by how often we keep talking.
Once a year, everybody.
So this is really about an annual expenditure that we go through every year.
Need a motion this time to approve?
I'll make a motion where it's pretty much purchased at this time.
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along, new business, number six. Letter E, Nisa Grant, Ellinport.
Do we have that authorized expenditure from Van, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me back up. Number six, new business, D.
In your package, if you'll turn to the next page, this is Van hauling prisoners. Major's question is, years ago, I think our federal inmates used to bring us in close to about nine hundred and something thousand. It dropped down to about four hundred and something thousand. And Major's made a deal with the federal prisoners. If we'd pick them up, it'd weigh the transport fee. And probably gains more prisoners. And it has, it is working. I think he's having about thirty-something thousand a month, and now he's up to about forty, eighty percent.
Motion approved, if you can wait?
Please, Mr. Smith.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir, Mr. Kenny. Moving right along, number six, new business. Letter E, Nisa Grant for Ellinport.
Mr. Chairman, Nisa's just simply asked me to let it reflect somewhere in a minute that what we're doing with our last twenty-five thousand dollar grant is a matching grant. It's fifty thousand dollars to be used toward the buy-in of the inner pillar. They just want to see documentation. The council approves of that.
Okay. This time I ask for a motion to approve of the Nisa Grant.
I'm not even looking to approve.
You get a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussions? All in favor of the Nisa Grant? Any opposed? Nisa Grant is approved.
The reason I'm not voting, brother, we've got some involvement.
The record shows that Mr. Councilman Cowell excused himself from voting in the cause of morality. It has an impact on the property. Alright, moving right along, new business, number six. Letter F, proposal to Station Six, substation of Station One.
Yes, sir. All we're doing here is just sitting and taking one. We're taking Station Six, making a substation of One. There will be no changes whatsoever other than it's listed as a substation of One, which will give them a reduction in their homeowner insurance. So it's, that's just a win all the way around.
So, Mr. Berry, that personnel that we have right now, it's like any, any answer to you.
That's, that's correct.
I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to change it to a substation.
Motion made by Councilman Cowell. Need a second?
Sorry.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along, number six, new business. Letter G, Recreation Request.
Okay, in your packets, you have one from Mr. Multry for the Dillon Middle School. Every year, he takes his students to Washington, the seventh and eighth graders. And this is going to be May fifteenth through May the nineteenth, and he is asking for a donation.
Did I say it to you?
No, not that one yet. You want to do this one first?
We can do it all together. We can prove all of it again.
Okay, well, do y'all want to do separate, I mean like?
Anybody that want to donate, please?
I'll donate to Mr. Multry.
I'll send it.
Yes.
How much?
Fifty dollars.
Count, count. Whatever you want.
I'll give fifty dollars, something.
Robbie, you're thinking? Robbie, you're thinking?
And the next one is bicyclists building bridges. They're asking for your support, bicycle building bridges with our annual fundraiser. They are a nonprofit organization that reaches out to children whom mom and dad are incarcerated. A contribution of one hundred dollars from each council member will give our organization tremendous boost. Our goal is to raise ten thousand dollars by February twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen.
I give fifty dollars. It's time to make a motion to approve the recreational request.
I'll make that motion to approve the recreational request.
You get a second. Say, any further discussions? Not all in favor? In opposed. Right? Move right along, the new business six, H and I have been tabled, so we want to discuss that. Move on down, new business number seven, financial report.
Okay, if you go to, I guess, exhibit seven, currently, this is as of today, the general fund account, we've got four million, ninety-two thou, ninety-two thousand, got CD as first citizens, about two million, first bank, got savings, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, Anderson Brothers, about two hundred thousand, comes up to a total of six million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Out of that, that is restricted as the debt service, the sinking fund for bond repayment is a little over three million, gives us the available funds of three million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand. That is fine.
Right? Mr. Smith? Mr. Gary? On our report, we got our budget report, it shows that we got seven hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four, oh, twenty-six cents for Lakeview and Lata Infrastructure. If we had to spend that, Dave, would it be available, would you say?
Probably not, with, with the Enel Port purchase.
Kind of back in maybe September, October, you said that you'd been told that you'd put that five hundred thousand into a separate account. Would you know today whether or not that's in a separate account or not?
It is not.
It's not, okay, thanks, sir. All right, any further discussion?
All right, move on, move along, the new business, number eight, administrative report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we've got a few items here, I'll run through them quickly. Item A, which remains somewhat of a thorn to all of us, is the judicial building. We continue to make progress. Every time it rains, and we're not signing off anything more as an engineer until we survive a successful rain without any kind of leaks. We did experience some this last time, so FBI has, they've been pretty diligent in coming in and calling, so we're, we're still not there yet. FEMA reversing update, you'll see this sheet here, this is one little bright spot, of course, these are all expenditures that we've already made. It's work in progress. We've had Ted here with us, Trump FEMA, that's helped win on in this, so it's pretty much explanatory, the breakdown, the first thirty or sixty days, I think we received eighty-five percent, after that, it drops by five percent, but to total what, as of today, and I just got this update from the road repair, we should be recipients of three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-seven. Of course, that's FEMA reimbursement, manpower, equipment used, I, just all the, all the things that go into this. You'll see some that's not completed, so we're still doing some more money. Even the road repair, we're still doing things today as a result of the Matthews, so you'll even see more come in at the road repair, so. This is, again, revenue, I'm not speaking out of line, that we've already expended, we should receive back, so I think that's a pretty positive sheet right there. Any questions on that? Fire department updates, as much as you know, I've spent a tremendous amount of time with this. These guys are tremendous workers, we owe them a debt of gratitude. Often, when I talk with them, having served in Marine Corps, any given day, they can go in and not come back, so we owe them a, a great deal of gratitude. However, we're recognizing some places that we can, can tighten up a little bit in the way of, of resources, financially and, and manpower. So we, we implemented a few things just last week, and, you know, it wasn't totally embraced from the beginning with, but as they, weeks gone on, I, I think they're starting to embrace it. We're going to a two-call structural response, no alarms there, because if anybody is there any trouble, they quickly pick up the horn and, and tell the next appropriate station to come out. Approved vacation in advance, is stipulation that I put in. We've got away from maintaining dairy lobs, that's important for a lot of reasons, so we put that back in practice. And one thing is no additional pay if you're on the clock. In other words, if, if you're on, on the clock, you don't get additional pay to respond to a, a fire. And after the dust settled, I, I, I think everybody was in agreement with that. Okay, item D, this is very important, and Mr. James Campbell kind of spearheaded this. This is something that was done when I was in mayor, marrying his mayor, and it's a pretty good program. Labor discussion of ordinance providing for the closing demolition of dwellings unfit for human habitation. You know, we all got those spots that were dilapidated, nuisance for whatever reasons, and even a crime area. So in, in essence, what we've had and exist in ordinance, what we can do, you know, we're going there and getting permission from the landowner, and isn't it to come down to the chair, down to the house that fits this description? There's a few hoops we have to go through. Ah, there you go. There's a few hoops we'll have to go through, but, but other than that, and there has to be a charge for this, though. Anytime we go on private land, and we're public in it, there has to be a charge. According to our ordinance, you know, we can, we can levy on the taxes, but one thing that we did, we may want to look at, you can put a nominal fee on there, that's up to your discretion. And if we do that, some people pay that, they, they pay it. Let me just suggest a raw number, three, four hundred dollars, which would be way less than our cost in it. But, you know, if we're getting rid of a crime element, or if we're upgrading the look of the neighborhood, that's not a bad thing. As a preventive measure, I did call Judge Birch and ask him to look at this, doesn't see any problem with it whatsoever. So it would be well within our rights to exercise this, and it's a good thing, it addresses up our, our county. Lakeview request, I had some citizens over at Lakeview to request, they've got a ball field that's in ruins by way of the hurricane. All they've asked us to do, they're getting the sand clay donated, and ask that the county would be willing to use our manpower and trucks to haul, I think it's about five loads over there. I personally think it's a, a good idea, and I, I would hope the council would look favorable on that. In fact, Mr. Chairman, would y'all be prepared to, to authorize me to, to do that today?
I don't see a problem with that, but someone else.
Is anybody, it's a good gesture, and they.
No, one issue, another issue, like you've all been doing county part, so it's good if we look down, we're good working.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir. Speeds, could we put that at your discretion, on what we charge?
Well, I, I, I think we'd need a set fee, I, I really do, and so I'll bring that forward in the next council meeting if you like. All right, let's see. Let me add, let me take a liberty here. We, in terms of collections, we hired somebody to do some landfill collections, real numbers, I got them today. Since January first, we, our, our receivables, he's, he's one major, one major vendor, from ninety days to thirty days, yielded about ninety-eight thousand dollars, so that in itself was significant. We sent some letters out, and we've collected about a hundred thousand more, and I'm not sure if we've collected afterwards, so, so far, that, that's working, that's working pretty well. Mr. Chairman, that's all I got. Does she have any questions? Any questions?
I got, I got one question, going back to, to, to two responses on fire. I've seen a lot of stuff that OSHA requires, and I think we need to look into that a little farther, I know you're doing it right now, but I think we might have to change it back to, because, and I've, I've seen a letter where, when we went to our three response call on fires, where the OSI rating automatically went down one, one point to everything in my area, and if they come back and check it, it might go by good, and so folks, taxpayers could, that's something we need to look into.
Oh, absolutely, double check that. Just thank you, my understanding is it will not affect ours, but I would double check that, okay? All right.
Anything further? Not thinking, Mr. Secretary. All right, move right along, agenda number nine, pockets. Page, second reading, is authorizing purchase of a park to hundred and fifty-eight point eighteen acres of land on a plan, Dillon, Ellinport parcel record, in the office of Cluckport for Dillon County, in Clackbrook, forty-six, that pays two eighty-four in the amount, not to exceed two billion and four hundred thousand dollars. Authorizing the execution of the contract between Dillon County, South Carolina, fourth party, for the conveyancy of said hundred and fifty-eight point eighteen acres, authorizing conveyancy said to the hundred and fifty-eight point eighteen acres to the South Carolina fourth party pursuant to the terms of said contract. Do you have anything?
Uh, no, sir, that's self-explanatory.
Okay. Motion, the motion to pass, second reading?
Negative.
Second.
Second.
I do have any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor? Move right along, pockets, read nine, number, number B, second reading, orders to amend, orders number sixteen dash zero four relating to the appropriation of funds and approval of a detailed budget for Dillon County for the fifth year beginning July first, twenty sixteen, ending on July thirty, June thirtieth, I'm sorry, twenty seventeen, to further provide for revenue expenditure during the fifth year and to provide for values that needed there to. Mr. Secretary?
Same thing, just what we covered in the public here, just looking for hopefully a, a motion and a second.
Okay. It's time, we'll just have a motion to pass, second reading, to amend orders, the budget orders. Second. Say, okay, any further discussion? All in favor? In opposed. Right? Move right along, agenda number ten, resolution A, Black History Month.
I think Jim Su has that, prepared to read it today. All three.
Okay, a resolution proclaiming the month of February as Black History Month in Dillon County. Whereas most of the county of Dillon's honor, strength and statue can be attributed to the diversity of cultures and traditions that are celebrated by the residents of this great county. And whereas African Americans have played significant roles in the history of South Carolina's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working tirelessly to maintain and promote their culture and history. And whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance, African Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to Dillon County and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas, in nineteen seventy-six, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout the American experience, which goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced and innovative societies in our history that we can draw inspiration from. And whereas, Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, took a stance against prejudice to build lives of dignity and opportunity, advanced the causes of civil rights, and strengthened our families and communities. And whereas, during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenge of African Americans and look to the future, to continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. And now, therefore, it be, it resolved that the county council of Dillon County do hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month, and that by issuing this proclamation, the county council encourages our residents to join us in honoring that many contributions made by African Americans to Dillon County and the state of South Carolina. And it is so resolved this twenty-second day of February, twenty-seventeen. I'll need some.
Just, I, what I'm gonna do, once you get all three passed, then I'll come down, and we'll sign all three of them, get that done. All right. See, the motion is signed, the pass, resolution, Black History Month, make that motion, Mr. Chairman, if we get a second. Say, all in favor? In opposed? Move right along, resolution B, welcome to Anderson Brothers Bank.
Okay, resolution, Dillon County Council welcoming Anderson Brothers Bank to Dillon County. Whereas Anderson Brothers Bank opened a bank branch on Main Street in Lata on October the fifth, twenty sixteen, and whereas Anderson Brothers Bank is known as a community bank with a reputation for helping individuals and businesses. And whereas Dillon County is pleased that Anderson Brothers Bank has chosen to locate in Dillon County along with other fine banks in the county. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Dillon County Council is adopting this resolution, congratulates and welcomes Anderson Brothers Bank back to Dillon County. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is presented to William Crane on behalf of the entire Anderson Brothers Bank family.
Welcome you guys, just time to make a motion. I think that's the, uh, Anderson Brothers Bank resolution, motion made by Councilman Rodney Cowell, if we get a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? In opposed? Okay, move right along, the city Red Cross, um, the Red Cross month resolution.
In Dillon County, we have a long history of helping our neighbors in need. American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our heroes. Those Red Cross volunteers and donors who give up their time and resources to help their community members. Those heroes help families find shelter after a home fire, they give blood to help trauma victims and cancer patients. They deliver comfort items to military members in the hospital, they use their life-saving skills to, to save someone from heart attack, drowning, or choking. They enable children around the globe to be vaccinated against measles and rubella. The American Red Cross depends on local heroes to, to deliver help and hope during a disaster. We applaud our heroes here in Dillon County, who give of themselves to assist our neighbors when they need a helping hand. Across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small. In fact, every eight minutes, organization responds to a community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and other necessities to those affected. It collects nearly forty percent of the nation's blood supply, provides twenty-four hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions of life-saving skills such as lifeguarding at CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program, connects people members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. We dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now, therefore, we, county council, by virtue of authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of Dillon, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim March, twenty-seventeen, as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to support this organization and this noble humanitarian mission. In witness thereof, I have here unto, set my hand, this twenty-second day of February in the year of our Lord, two thousand and seventeen, and of Dillon, South Carolina, signifying March as American Red Cross Month, Dillon County Council.
Motion is signed, to approve resolution, Red Cross?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, I see Jim Liston here, he's with the Red Cross in Dillon County, and I want to thank him, Jim, for all the good work you've done, reached a shape for your dump in Dillon County, I appreciate it.
Okay, all right, we got our motion, we got a second, all in favor? Opposed? Any, any more discussion? I'm gonna come down, and we're going to do the Black History Month, and we'll sign that. Those who want to be in that photo, you can stand behind me, then we. All right, we're gonna start by, level on the agenda pockets. All right, we're going to start by, level on the agenda, pockets, Dillon County Public Private, you cannot develop partnership, bold, District 2, Jack Scott, you've got here. District 3, Archie Scott, I'd like to appoint at this time Mr. Ronnie Gardner, start if you'll start. Brief introduction, let me see if I...
I'm Ronnie Gardner, from Lata, South Carolina, born and raised Dillon County.
Thank you. Motion is time to convert, Mr. Ronnie Gardner, until you cannot develop. The motion is a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Move right along. Right, this is, we can have an executive session, at this time, and any further sayings or doings, this would conclude Dillon County Council's regular council meeting. Then, I'm going to say any doings this time, all of them, take a motion to adjourn. I make the motion, and then, okay, this is a second. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Move down, adjourn.